Call this meeting to order if you could all stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, is there any public comment? Noting no public comment, we'll move on to verification of the posting of the agenda, please.
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on June 6th between the hours of 1:00 and 5:00 at all of the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thank you, Pam. Can I get an approval of the agenda as submitted?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Chairman, a second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Our first appointment, six-day consideration and possible action, offer of employment for primary candidate Chris Spross or alternate candidate Jennifer Savage to serve as the county manager for Churchill County. Who will be taking this one? Joe?
I'll go ahead and take it, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Joe Sanford, for the record. Mr. Chair, this commission had directed Human Resources and myself to sit down with each of the candidates and negotiate terms of employment that would be suitable for them upon entering into the county manager position. Ms. Bronson and myself met with each of the candidates a couple of days ago and negotiated terms. Those are provided to you in the agenda packet. I will briefly summarize them. Candidate Spross requested that he be under the standard policies of Title III, except as addressed here. He currently has a personal vehicle allowance of $7,200 annually. He would request to continue to keep that. There is a county manager vehicle that would be used as part of the standard fleet for use by wherever is appropriate in the county. That he would request to be placed at Step 6 at grade 96 with annual reviews thereafter. Within the county, typical regular merit increases are 2.5%. We negotiated to be at a lower initial step, Step 6, with a plan of 5% per year merit increases. This is more in line with some of our other general manager contracts. I believe that is how the CCCom contract is set up. Merit increases would be limited to grade 96, Step 13. That is the highest on the scale. And that he would assume this position effective July 7th of 2025. The...I'll just start with negotiations on that one. Negotiations with Mr. Spross focused on his longevity with the county, as well as his experience and knowledge and ability to perform the role and understanding of the tasks. He currently is in the Assistant County Manager position at Step 8. This was going to require significantly more public view and work associated with the position than his current position and would have a fairly substantial pay increase associated with it. The amount negotiated was within line with our expectations going in, and so I am not going to be here to present it to you as something that was unexpected. The commission has the right to consider and make an employment offer under any terms that it deems appropriate. This is not a requirement that you adopt any particular negotiation. The intention of having the 5% merit increases instead of starting at a higher part of the range was so that in the event that the commission ultimately chose that they were unhappy with services, there would be a savings to the county. If they were happy with continued services, that is when increased costs would occur. Candidate Savage negotiated separate terms. She agreed to the following, again, standard conditions of Title III, that she would have a vehicle stipend in the amount of $7,200 annually, that she would be at grade 96, Step 1, with annual reviews thereafter. She did negotiate and request a minimum three-month severance package should either of the parties decide to terminate the relationship, and that would become effective at Month 6 and terminate at Month 12 of employment. The idea being that if in the first six months it didn't work out, she would leave, but if between 6 and 12 months things were not appropriate, she would have a three-month fully paid severance. She further requested that she receive $5,000 in relocation assistance to find suitable housing in Churchill County, and that she would start the position sometime between June 26th and June 30th. She did require the ability to give notice to her current employer of at least, you know, approximately two weeks, and this would put her in that time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. The...I think the negotiations were all done in good faith and fairly amongst all of the parties. No one had anything except appropriate conduct during the entire time.
Thank you. Joe, is there any questions or comments from border staff?
I have a question. It pertains to the $7,200 vehicle allowance. Why...explain that to me. If we give him a company vehicle...
So, this is the standard for when we have someone who does not use a company vehicle. So, instead of taking a company vehicle with...when they have the option to instead utilize their own personal vehicle and then utilize that for business instead, they get a stipend to cover maintenance and costs associated with the use of that. It is generally preferable than having a county vehicle, because there are a lot of regulations associated with the use of a county vehicle on...for personal functions. Can create some obstacles when using those vehicles for taking your kid to school, things like that. Obviously, there is already a vehicle that exists that the current county manager utilizes. Currently, Mr. Spross utilizes his own vehicle instead of a county vehicle, and Ms. Savage requested the same consideration for the same reasons.
Typically, you get a mileage for using your own. I've never seen this before unless they're providing their own vehicle. So, this is...
They are providing their own vehicle in this situation. If...
So, we're gonna have... We're gonna have an extra county vehicle?
Yes. We would have one vehicle that we are currently...that is currently assigned out that would not be being used.
Okay. That makes sense, then.
I have the same feeling as Commissioner Hyde. We already have a vehicle assigned to this department. It's a...it's a nice vehicle. There's no previous time that I know of in the recent history that the stipend's been made. I don't support the $7,200 stipend because we do have a vehicle there, and it doesn't seem to have been a problem for any other county manager. So, that's one issue that I have with stipend. If I still have the floor, I'd like to know if the compensation and salary administration policy was considered when negotiating with Mr. Spross?
It was. The...so, the...we have a policy associated with internal promotions. That promotion requires a...that when a employee is promoted within a department or within the county, they are typically placed at the first step in the range that represents a 5% increase in salary. That would be a...I understand in this case was Step 1 would have constituted a 7% increase, and so that would have been the standard location. Obviously, it is up to the discretion of the board as well as others relates to actions or activities that have more responsibilities associated with them than the current position. But, yes, it was reviewed and was discussed as part of the negotiation. It was one of the initial discussions of the county's position.
I understand. In the advanced step promotion, it says that the county board may approve an advanced step placement within a salary range upon promotion for two reasons: to meet a difficult recruiting problem, which I do not think we had, and to employ a person who possesses superior qualifications. I do disagree with his qualifications. However, if we do this today, going higher than the Step 1, then we're setting precedents for the future, and I don't have any other evidence other than this policy to stand on. And does this open the door for other promotions to negotiate higher than what our policy actually says? If we don't agree with our policy, then we maybe should consider looking at changing the policy, but this is the policy that I think I should stand on today because it's only fair across the board. It goes all the way down to just a simple employee or a basic employee to be...come in and say, "Well, you know, you class me up." That's how I understand that. If I am incorrect or wrong, or if someone would like to voice opinion about that, please do.
Joe, does CCCom have a vehicle stipend?
No. I have no idea.
No.
No, it does not?
It doesn't.
So, that's nothing that's...or I'm not gonna say that's not new, but that's something that we've been through before. Me and my prior boards have been through before. It really doesn't bother me too much, just like Joe stated. In my opinion, when you take on this position, just like Joe said, you have a county vehicle. There's a lot more liability. You're not...you don't have the freedom and the luxuries of taking your kids to work in that county vehicle. It kind of makes it a challenge, in my opinion, especially the county manager position where you're running around to different departments and tours and stuff like that, in my opinion. So...
We currently have this stipend. It currently exists. It is currently being used by Mr. Spross in his current position. So, it's under that same umbrella, but I will leave it completely to the board's discretion as to whether or not you want to offer it as part of this offer.
I do believe there is an option for Mr. Fest to exercise the stipend. He just never has because he's out of vehicle provided. And I'm fine with the stipend as long as they're using their own vehicle and they're, you know...and we have another need for that truck that we have sitting there. I don't want to waste an asset that we have.
Like I said, I'm gonna stand on opposing the stipend because we do have a satisfactory vehicle for that position, and it's not a bad vehicle. So...and he can do his job as he needs to. I understand his position. He already currently has it. That was before our time. I don't know the negotiation of the terms, but that's just...we already have the vehicle, and it's usable for county business. That's where I stand.
I have one more question. The managers shall get a 5%. What is the...what is the...why wouldn't we just go with...from Step whatever we decide to the next step? Six would go to seven.
So, I mean, this was a...this was a negotiation which was based off of the intent to, I guess, negotiate a lower starting salary than was initially offered and presented with the idea that it would be the board's decision at the time of each annual evaluation whether the employee, Mr. Spross in this case, was meeting the metrics of your desire to continue to get merit increases. Now, the standard...standard merit increase is one step, 2.5%. The request here was to do 5% with the intention that I believe...I mean, I don't want to say is...I was gonna say it. The negotiation was that he planned to be here for at least five years, and that under that trajectory, he would end his last year at the highest step in the range. And so, that was something that was important to him, and so rather than starting with a higher step, which would cost the county additional funds, especially in a situation where you were unhappy with the performance, it was at risk for the employee at the front end with only upon your satisfaction with his employment that he would continue to rise.
Any other questions or comments from border staff?
I think if we deviate from the policy, we need to have justification of why we're doing so, so the other county staff understands. And then, just reminder, it's gonna open us up to who knows what in the future.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Is there any public comment on this agenda item? Go ahead, Chris.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Chris Spross, for the record. I just wanted to make a comment on the stipend. As Mr. Sanford had said, that stipend is currently in the county manager budget, and I do acknowledge that by me utilizing that stipend, if I were to offer this position, there would be a county vehicle available. However, if I am offered this position, we would have to backfill my current position, and the person that backfills that position, that vehicle, would be able to be used by that person. So, I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that.
Thank you, Chris. Is there any other public comment? Okay, if there's no more questions, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'm willing to make a motion, but it is not as it's stated in the agenda.
You can make it, and I guess we'll just take it to a vote?
I think we'll prob...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to offer employment to Chris Spross. It's a...for the county manager position of range 96, Step 1, with no vehicle stipend.
Motion's been made. Is there a second on that motion? Seeing no second, motion has failed. Can I get another motion, or do we need to have more discussion on this item? I...I guess I'll give my discussion here. I don't think we're deviating from Title III, in my opinion. This is a unique position that directly reports to us. Most of the time, there isn't like a negotiation for an average employee. This is kind of a select few. This is like library board, county manager, CCCom, and I think that's it in the county where they actually go into negotiations for these things. So, I don't think we're deviating personally from Title III, and that's my opinion on that.
I respectfully disagree with that because if we weren't deviating from the policy, it would have a stipulation in there to exclude the county manager's office, I believe. And if that's the case moving forward, maybe we need to look at changing this policy. Once again, should we go down this road, I don't know where it leads us. It leads us into uncharted waters to allow anyone else to come in and negotiate something higher than what our policy states. If we're not gonna follow our policy, then we need to exclude it from the county code.
This is not uncharted waters, though. I mean, I sat through the hiring of our library director, and we did the same thing. Library board, I don't have voting power on that board, but library board went through the same thing with hiring the current library director as well as the past library director. So, it's not uncharted waters. Again, it's been done before, and yeah, if you don't...if you disagree with it, then maybe we can look at Title III, but it's not uncharted waters.
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but we stuck to Title III as much as we could to keep this contract as streamlined as possible, correct? Because this is the smallest contract I've ever seen.
So, there will be an offer letter that flushes out these terms more completely than the agenda item does. This is just to give you an idea of exactly what those terms will be. You know, for example, there's standard terms and conditions associated with this that are outlined in Title III. And so, the offer letter will say, "You're subject to Title III. You're subject to annual reviews and performance evaluation. You're an at-will employee, subject only to the discretion of the board." Those terms will be communicated in the offer letter in the exact same manner that we always do, and that is what you are directing us to do today. These are the...these are the terms that are being negotiated. The rest will be that you're an at-will employee, that you have, you know, standard...your accrual of sick and annual leave and those sorts of pieces that are subject to Title III. I didn't include them because Title III covers those. But, yes, this is...this is stuck as closely to Title III as possible, one, to ensure that this remains not unique in terms of how we manage and operate the position, and because it's gonna be a lot harder to redo every case than it is when we've already put a lot of thought into Title III. So, that is why everyone is based off Title III first.
I guess that's probably what I expected more to see. Everything kind of outlined. Whatever you want to take out of Title III, insert it into this contract. And then, this is a separate standing binding contract with everything out of Title III with these additions. Because I'm kind of...it is kind of gray water for me as well, you know? Is it everything in Title III? Now, we're just adding this stuff?
It will be everything in Title III except for these provisions. These provisions will be the only changes from Title III.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also state that this has no...my decisions today, my thoughts today, have nothing to do with Mr. Spross himself. We have a good working relationship. This is merely following the policy that's been set forth before us, and I understand the negotiations to get the right person. You have to do this. You have to do that. But we also have another candidate that's, you know, within that range, and I am not going down that road to...because that's what she offered. I am going down the road of the policy says for a promotion. This is how it should be, and that's where I'm standing. I wanted to make that record known for Mr. Spross.
Thank you.
In the policy, it also says that we can give higher bombs. I mean, that has happened because our policy doesn't...when we...when I worked at the phone company, it's not a lot different. You can be placed, you know, a lot of times, sometimes it is the next step, the first step in the pace scale at the next level, but sometimes if you're coming in with a lot of experience, it can be higher than that. So, I don't think that we're deviating from the policy in that regard.
And just so everyone's clear, I mean, we read this in the general report. It says, "Employed under the standard conditions and policies of Title III, except as specifically outlined herein," and then it lists these three things. So, Title III's already being applied. These three items are just being added on top of Title III for this position. And I'm just gonna say it again. We've done this process before with library board, with CCCom. It's not an unstandard process. We're not going off on some path down a different road. Again, if we...if you disagree with that, then that's a later time, but that's currently what it is.
I don't disagree with that because I have no knowledge of that in the past, but since I've been here, I would like to follow the policy as close as we can so we start getting in that direction to where everyone that's involved knows the direction that we're always going, and they never have to wonder which side of the boat we're on. That is some of my reasoning as well. And I, you know, I understand that we have the right to bump this all the way up, whatever we choose to do, but if the policy says Step 1 is the correct position, then we need to justify why we're stepping him up five positions.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Can I get another motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the contract with the $7,200 stipend with the notion that the current county manager truck will backfill the Chris's position, whatever that is determined to be, and grade 96, Step 3, and those are the only changes I would make.
Do I have a second to that motion?
For my clarification, Mr. Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
When you say that being the only change, are you striking the 5% portion or not?
No, I'm leaving it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sanford, does this chart reflect 5% each year, or is it less than that?
That chart is 2.5%, so we'd be talking essentially...5% would be going from, in this case, Step 3 to then Step 5, Step 7, Step 9, Step 11, Step 13.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Passes 2 to 1. With that, is there any public comment?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Joe.
Because we've deviated from negotiations, would you also consider making an action that in the event that that is not accepted, what you would like me to do? We need to come back. We can make an alternative offer to the alternate candidate. I just...I don't...I don't want to have a situation where potentially we're bringing it back for another meeting with...
Well, I think you...
It's up to you. I mean, we can do another meeting if it's not accepted and have you reconsider. I just...I want to have direction, please.
Is there a way we can recess and you can meet with Mr. Spross right now?
Let's go ahead and recess. We'll need a motion. Can I get a motion to recess?
Mr. Chair, I move to recess.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. For you to call this meeting to order. With that, Joe, I'll pass it to you first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had asked for a recommendation in the event that an offer was not accepted under these terms. I've had the opportunity to have a recess and communicate the details of the offer with Mr. Spross. He was in the meeting, and so I think he understood them already. He wanted a couple of minutes to think about it and decide whether he wanted to present any counteroffer. My, I believe, based off his head shake, that his plan was to just accept the offer as you have made the motion for, but I will turn it over to him to confirm that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. After some brief deliberation and consultation with family, I've decided to accept the offer as presented by Commissioner Hyde.
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate it. Okay, with that, that's taken care of, correct, Joe? We're good?
That is correct. We will prepare a formal offer letter exactly as you have presented it here for signature and acceptance, but based off of the discussion here today, I do not believe we need any further alternative actions.
Okay, thank you. At this time, is there any public comment? Noting none, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.